Okay, folks, I think it's six o'clock and so I'm calling the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. It is Tuesday, May fourteenth, and we are in the council chambers of the City of Platteville. We'll start with roll call. Is that you, Colette, or is it Jerika?
That'll be me tonight.
Okay.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Yeah.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda then is the consideration of the consent agenda. We have the council minutes from April twenty-third, payment of bills, financial report for April. I have no appointments for boards and commissions tonight. I think we're still getting organized with who's where in terms of some of the councilman licenses. I have one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as they're in your packet, taxi driver licenses as they're in your packet, a temporary Class B, Class B to serve fermented malt beverages and wine to the Platteville Main Street Program for Thursday, May thirtieth. This would be at the Platteville Rallo-Jamison and Mining Museums for the Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, and a temporary Class B, Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages and wine to the Southwest Rotary Club on Friday, June fourteenth, from four to eight P. M. This would be for their annual uncorked downtown wine walk. Also, a street closing permit for Second Street from Maine to Furnace and Mineral Street from Oak to Third on Saturday, July twentieth, from eight in the morning to midnight for the annual Southwest Music Festival sponsored by the Platteville Regional Chamber. All of these can be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine and nature. If you want anything for separate discussion, let us know. Otherwise, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll vote.
No?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. As we start this section of the agenda, I would like to pay special attention to our municipal clerk. It was municipal and our municipal assistant clerk. It was Municipal Clerks Week last week. We didn't meet, but Colette and Jerika, we certainly very much appreciate the work that you do. So, thank you. And also coming up next week, when we're not meeting, is the wastewater professionals appreciation day. So, Howard, we're going to expect you to carry the message down to the wastewater treatment plant that we do appreciate the work that they do also, not only on that day, but frankly, every day. And I guess the other thing I would say is that this Thursday, the sixteenth of May, unless there is terrible weather, is our city spruce-up day. So, the city offices will be closed, but all city staff will be on duty working around. I don't know what your projects are, but maybe somebody can tell me what your projects are going to be or where we'll expect to see people.
We're hoping to do some beautification in front of the police department with some landscaping efforts up and down Main Street and Second with some repainting of garbage cans and, I believe, bike racks. Time permitting, doing some beautification over here at City Park with some different trebbery pickup, garbage pickup, and possibly along Mineral Street. All weather depending right now, it's looking a little stormy and gloomy, but we're going to keep our fingers crossed.
So, if you see, will you all be wearing, you know, like bright green, yeah, or whatever color it is?
A safe attire and away from vehicles and such is the plan.
There we go.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anybody else with any comments, observations, or petitions? I had none from the audience. Kathy?
I was going to mention this during the update for Police and Fire Commission, but this is also National Police Week, and our police department is hosting an open house tomorrow at five-thirty. So, I encourage everybody to stop in, and I'm sure most of us have had a tour, but support the PD. Five-thirty? Five.
Anything else?
The fire department's event. Will that be?
Oh, your fire department, one hundred and fiftieth, is at the end of June, June the twenty-second. I hear, I see these fingers going.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were going to be, we can announce it.
Okay. All right, let's move on then to the reports that were in the packet. We have the Housing Authority Board. Lynn, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Otherwise, now that'll be my committee. Community Safe Routes, Tom?
We meet on the twentieth.
Okay, so you haven't met yet. Parks, Recreation, and Forestry, Bob?
Um, nothing to add. I would just like to recognize Bob and Adam and his staff for all the work they've done this spring to do everything to get the pool ready. They've already had two certification times. They've licensed or certified and hired twenty-one lifeguards, a new manager, three hundred kids are signed up for lessons. And so, they've just done everything possible to get the pool so it won't close this summer. And there's a lot of work and a lot of effort.
Okay, Museum Board, Tom?
It meets tomorrow night.
Meets tomorrow, okay. Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No additions to the minutes.
Police and Fire Commission, Kathy, anything else?
Nothing for the add.
Okay, Airport Commission, Bob?
Um, nothing to add.
Okay. Other reports that were in the packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report for April, the Airport Financial Report for April, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions?
I think a minute. Yeah, I have one for Joe Carroll. And it's under accomplishments, May twenty twenty-four. Could you say something about working with the attorney, with the Attorney Cole on code enforcement issues with the property at six forty-five Sickle Street? And it says something about current effort is to obtain an inspection warrant that will allow the city to determine the overall condition of the building on the property to determine the next course of action. Could you say something about that?
Yeah, so the exterior conditions are pretty obvious if you've gone by the property, but there's been a, what appears to be a hole in the roof, part of the roof for a while now. So, we have some concerns about the interior condition of the property, if the, if it's caused some water damage or not. So, we do have some structural concerns. So, we want to get an inspection warrant so we can go into the building and further examine the property and then determine the best course of action as far as how to proceed.
So, is that done by the building inspector?
So, the building inspector would do the inspection and be probably be accompanied by a police officer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, then let's move on to the next portion of our agenda. We have no action items tonight. So, we have information and discussion. We have six items on that information and discussion. So, the first one is an ordinance, a code amendment to Chapter twenty-two for zoning. Joe?
Yes, thank you. So, this is really just a housekeeping measure. I kind of realized that there were some portions of the zoning ordinance that needed to be modified because they were not correctly included in the ordinance when we went through numerous changes to the code. It was back in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. We did kind of a thorough review and analysis of the ordinance based on some changes to state law, primarily conditional use permits, and then we did some changes to the housing sections, et cetera. But what happened when we went through the process, I always do a red line copy of the ordinance. So, it shows all the changes to the ordinance, you know, stricken or underlined new language. But then, when it goes to the council, that those changes get converted to the actual ordinance format. And when I put that ordinance format together, I inadvertently did not include a couple of sections. So, they did not formally get adopted when the council voted on that. So, I included, most of them are in the home occupation section of the ordinance because there were some of those sections that should have been removed because it's now redundant with some of the changes we made. And then, similar to the definition section, and then there's one graphic in the definition section that just needs to be modified. So, it's all, the Plan Commission Council went through all these changes years ago and approved it in concept, it just did not get in the ordinance. So, it's, like I said, it's cleaning up what should have been done before.
So, some of this is a change in the way the state defines things, like Type One, Type Two, and Type Three.
Well, that's what started the process. The state changed the law regarding conditional use permits. And then, kind of at the same time as that, we were looking at our home occupation standards because of an issue with a kennel in a home property. So, most of our home occupations were listed as conditional uses. So, they kind of were both modified at the same time. So, that's why that most of the changes were related to that section.
Okay, so several sections then would be deleted. Two point, twenty-two oh-six C, D, and E would be deleted. And Joe, do you want to talk about Section twenty-two point one-five, amending these boundary lines?
So, that's, in related to that graphic, again, we made some changes regarding the housing requirements. So, basically, we changed the requirements for setbacks on corner lots. We used to have a requirement that a corner lot had two street yards, a side yard and a rear yard. And the required setbacks for rear yards are more than a side yard. So, you put the all three together as far as two side yards or two street yards in a rear yard. It didn't give them a lot of buildable area. So, we basically just changed it so a corner lot has two street yards and two side yards. So, one of the graphics, the pictures there still has a rear lot line shown on a corner lot, which would not be the case. So, it's just a matter of changing that one defined side yard.
Okay, any questions on this? Otherwise, we'll bring this forward at the next meeting. Do, we don't have to have a public hearing, or do we?
It will be a public hearing, yes.
Okay. All right, then let's go on to the Bike and Pedestrian Plan. And you're going to need to introduce yourself.
Yes, sounds good. Alyssa Shaker with the Regional Planning Commission. Yeah. Yeah, can I do that?
Yeah. You mean HDMI?
I have an HDMI, so hopefully I should be able to plug in. All right, all set up here. But I'm an assistant planner with the Regional Planning Commission, and I have been the project manager on this project. So, apologies to anyone who has heard this presentation once before, but hopefully I don't put you all to sleep with that. So, with this presentation, just kind of want to outline the purpose of this project and then some of the main recommendations that we have within this plan. So, jumping right into it, the purpose that we had was to look at the city's long-range bike and pedestrian vision, looking at multi-modal transportation in the community. In two thousand nine, the Regional Planning Commission had completed a Safe Routes to School Plan. So, we're kind of extending upon this, not just looking at schools, but also looking at things like grocery stores, parks, anything that folks might be moving to within the community that they would want access via their feet or their bicycle. So, within the plan, we have recommendations for the future, and then we also explore options for creating loops, both within and sort of outside of the community as a future plan. With this planning process, we mapped out quite a few things. So, first was crash data, then sidewalks and crosswalks, and also the student population. So, with this mapping, we were able to identify gaps and risk areas that we saw within the community. And through some public engagement, we also identified community interests and concerns. So, with that engagement process, we hosted seven focus groups. We also attended one township meeting. And then, once we had compiled the recommendations, we had one open house where folks were able to come in and review those recommendations with us. So, throughout the process, we engaged about a hundred and twenty members of the public. The Safe Routes Committee recommended approval of this plan in February, and then just last week, the Plan Commission recommended approval. Something to note is that the township did not approve this plan. We don't need their approval, but I just wanted to know it for you all so that you're aware. And as we walk through the recommendations, I'll kind of point out some points of contention or some areas that we do interact with the township. So, the Bike and Pedestrian Goals and Vision, you can kind of note some key points, such as safety, accessibility, having a variety of choices, interconnected trails, and then options for both commuters and recreational users. This might be a little basic for some of you, but wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page as we move through these recommendations. So, just a couple of definitions for you. Top left is a bike lane. Obviously, this is a designated lane for bikes to use, and it'll have that painted line to show where they can use it. So, an example would be Ridge Avenue. ADA curb ramps are these yellow or red ramps that are used for accessibility in the sidewalks. A share-o is a shared lane marking that mentions to drivers that cyclists can use the whole lane, but they're sharing that space. An RRFB is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So, this is where pedestrians will press the button, the lights will come on to signify to vehicles that there's a pedestrian crossing. A yield roadway will be used on low-traffic, low-speed roads. So, this would be where cyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles are all using the same space. There wouldn't necessarily be a sidewalk or anything like that, but with the low speeds, we wouldn't be concerned about it. And then, finally, a side path. If you think about the path that was installed along Business one fifty-one, that's kind of how we're defining that. It's a separate path from the roadway, but it's also a bit wider so that it can be multi-use. And finally, for this section, looking at the infrastructure, this is what currently exists within the city. So, about fifty-three miles of sidewalks, thirteen miles of multi-use trails or side paths, two hundred and twenty-two crosswalks, almost seven hundred ADA curb ramps, about a quarter mile of share-os, point eight miles of bike lanes, and then five RRFBs. Jumping into the recommendations, there are quite a few in this plan, so I'll just highlight a couple of the major ones. Looking first at the policies, these focus on the DOT classifications for roads. So, the first one is a local road. This will encompass most of the roads within Platteville. It's usually lower speed, lower traffic. Collectors are kind of that in-between, might have a bit higher speed, but really, they're just connecting local roads and arterial roads. And then, finally, arterials are split into minor and principal arterials. Principal arterials, as you can see, they, they might be connecting Platteville to other locations in our region, and then the minor arterials just assist those principal arterials. And so, with this policy, we're looking at where sidewalks should be located along those roads. So, on a local road, maybe there's some that don't need a sidewalk on either. They could be a yield roadway, but they could be located on one or both sides. Collector, one or both sides. And then arterial, we would recommend both sides. The next policy looks at where the infrastructure would be located. So, share-os and yield roadways, we obviously want on lower-speed roads. So, those will occur on local roads. And then, bike lanes could be on local or collector, sidewalks on any of them, and then multi-use side paths on arterials or collectors. Those are a bit extensive for local roads. And then, a final policy to note is that we're just recommending that the city look at how much infrastructure they're installing each year or maintaining in some way, repairing, to set as a baseline for future years. That way, we can say, you know, in X years, we want to install this number or this length of sidewalk in that year. So, that'll be a baseline for future years. The first specific location that I want to note, hopefully you can all see that okay. This is Highway eighty and Business one fifty-one, so sort of the intersection of Water Street and one fifty-one. So, this is where the bike trail crosses Highway eighty. Currently, there is not much infrastructure there to alert vehicles that pedestrians could be crossing there. So, our recommendations, the first would be an underpass or an overpass. This is a pretty extensive recommendation. So, you know, this would be kind of the, if we had a certain amount of money to do this, we could. But number two and number three would likely be more feasible. So, number two would be adding an RRFB with a high-visibility crosswalk. And then, the third option would be to reroute the trail up to that intersection and have people cross there. We're not, this probably isn't the best recommendation just because we think that pedestrians would be still crossing at that location instead of going up to the intersection, but it's something that we could try out if the city doesn't have the funds for the RRFB. The next location is along Business one fifty-one. So, we know that there's been extensive work done there to add in that side path or multi-use trail. What we're recommending here is to just continue that work and make sure that we fill in the gaps there. So, you can see from about Rose Meyer Management down to Insight Drive, there's no sidewalk there. So, really, just providing accessibility to those businesses for pedestrians and cyclists. And I'm going to flip back to, you also notice on this image, the blue line there, there's a gap from Water Street to Staley as well that could be added. There is the bike path there as well. And then, noting the township interaction here, Rose Meyer Management is in the township. So, that would be something that we would have to work with the owners of Rose Meyer Management to add a sidewalk along that piece of land. The next one is Lancaster Street and Camp Street. This was mentioned in several focus groups, particularly folks who have school-aged children. Currently, there is a crosswalk there. So, as you can see here, the crosswalk that is existing there is the standard crosswalk. It's shown in this image. What we're recommending is to upgrade to either Continental or Zebra, and that would just provide better visibility. We could also add an RRFB to that location. And then, a higher level measure would be to add a pedestrian island if we have the resources. Next location is along Southwest Road. So, as you see on the image on the right, there are lots of university students that live up in Fox Ridge Apartments. So, they're kind of traversing that path pretty frequently, and they've worn that pathway outside of the bridge. So, what we're recommending is to extend the sidewalk from the bike trail there near Lot twenty-eight up to Southwest Lane. And there is a parcel or two that is in the township that would be interacting with that there. Next, we kind of jump into the loop system that I mentioned. We're on our way to creating pretty, pretty great loops within Platteville to traverse on cycle or as a pedestrian. So, the option here would be to add a couple of areas of trail that would help with those loops. So, on the west side, near that label for the university, there's a blue line. That's from Moonlight Drive to Greenwood Avenue, and that would help with the connection. The other location is on the east side of Main Street, connecting the skate park to the dog park. And so, if I flip the screen, you can start to see all of the loops that would exist within the community if we start to make those connections. And then, going back just one, on the north side of the city boundary on Water Street, there is a spance of sidewalk that's sort of missing to connect the existing sidewalk in the city up to Gulfview Drive. That is within the township, but we recommended that as a way to complete the loop. The other loop that we're recommending is this more extensive loop trail. I think when I sent this packet, this map was a little bit incorrect, so just make that note for yourself that you should reference Figure twenty-six in the draft plan. The notes packet might be a little off because we did make a couple of edits with the PCA along the way. And so, now we have this sort of northern loop and also a southern loop with different options. Towards the center, you can see the expanse from Business one fifty-one to East Side Road is something that PCA has already been working on. So, this is a very long-term plan. This obviously isn't going to happen overnight. It's quite an extensive pathway. And so, I touched on most of these. These are the interactions with the township, mentioned the parcels along Business one fifty-one and Southwest Road, the northern boundary on Water Street to Gulfview Drive. Obviously, the full outer trail loop is pretty much in the township, and then the bike route on Gulfview Drive. So, if I flip back one slide again, I know that one reason that the township did not recommend approval was this crossing on Water Street on the northern part of the city. They were concerned about crossing Water Street there. So, there at Gulfview Drive.
The concern, actually, I'm sorry.
No, no, please, please interrupt.
I'll wait till questions.
Uh, no, I can certainly address that now. They were mostly just concerned with the safety of crossing Water Street at that location. Kind of our thought was people are going to cross there even if there's not a trail there because we saw them crossing there. So, we'd rather provide a safe measure through this plan as a way to cross.
And Bob, you should be aware that when, what is that, eighty, eighty or eighty-one to Montford?
Eighty.
Eighty, when the trial, when the side path was put in from about the Lutheran Church of Peace North, we specifically requested the DOT finish that off to Gulfview Drive because it would have been another, I don't know, hundred feet, two hundred feet. And they didn't. I mean, but it's ridiculous because, I mean, it stops at the city limits, but it should have gone as far as Gulfview. But sometimes, it's hard to get people to listen. Surely not.
Yeah, and so, in the conversation that I had with the township, this was probably back in October. They, we had mentioned the sidewalk on Second Street that extends north of the city limits. They said they might be interested in interactions if there was a grant that would fund it, but they're definitely not interested in funding any sidewalk projects in the township or maintaining those sidewalks once they're installed. So, the Second Street.
Did they install it? Didn't they install a path?
Yes, there's a side, there's a side path
Side path.
From the city limits up to Gulfview Drive
Gulfview.
On Second Street.
Second Road.
But Second Road, but it was installed as part of a, of a grant that, that was created by the state. And that's what Alyssa is mentioning, that they wouldn't do it unless, unless it was grant-funded. They wouldn't be using township money to do that.
Yeah, there's nothing in their ordinances that requires them to have sidewalks. So, they're just not interested in funding it. And that pathway is not shoveled during the winter, which that's kind of the maintenance aspect they were mentioning. But just wanted to provide that full transparent interaction. And final slide on implementation, we like to look at this kind of system of plan, do, study, and act. So, obviously, we're in the planning phase right now. The do step would kind of be to work with the city and the Safe Routes Committee to prioritize these recommendations and identify funding resources that could be used to implement this. The study would just be tracking installation. The study would just be tracking installation and reviewing any of the recommendations. And then the act would be obviously adopting some of those recommendations. And as time goes on, if there's anything that really isn't working for the city, of course, adapting. Or abandoning recommendations if they just aren't fitting with what your goals are. So that's all I have for you guys. Uh, happy to answer any more questions right now. Um, but then, of course, I'll be available on the next couple of weeks um via email or phone call to answer questions as well. Yeah, Bob.
Alyssa, um, I had one question that was on page fifteen of the seventy-two-page report. And Howard, I think you addressed this earlier, but it's under the sidewalk-related laws and policies. And it says, abutting about construction. Abutting owners are responsible for constructing sidewalks along any street, alley, or highway and are responsible for the entire cost. This includes existing homes without a sidewalk. And I was thinking you said it just applies to businesses. So I was wondering if that should be changed.
That would be a, an ordinance change, uh, but in practice, we haven't done that for over twenty years. Um, only for commercial properties.
Okay, so this would fall under to what you were saying, even if we. Um, voted to accept this, there are certain recommendations. They're strictly recommendations. They don't have to be implemented.
Yep, exactly. So, for example, if you just didn't have the funding for one of these recommendations, you could push it off to later years or. Um, like you said, just abandon it, so.
Thank you.
Well, I had a question.
Yeah.
Um, you had a picture up with the Lancaster and Camp Street.
Yeah, I can go back to it really quick. Wait, that's here.
The individual that showed um this, how the street, I guess what my question was. Is that what you and, is this the vi- this?
Yeah, yes. So. No, this, this was.
This is the vision.
Yeah, this would be an example, so we have the pedestrian islands on Pine Street, so it might look somewhat similar to that. Um, just depending on, you know, the funding you have for maintenance or installing those. Yeah, I didn't explain that very well, so yes, this is the vision.
How would that affect traffic?
Yeah, so the traffic flow would remain the same. Traffic actually might slow down a little bit with having a pedestrian island there. Um, as you start to narrow traffic lanes, then people are automatically slowing down. So as you're experiencing people maybe speeding on that road, it could slow down traffic a bit and make it even more safe for pedestrians.
Howard, is there a redesign going on for ha- that highway toward Lancaster now, or not?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I didn't remember.
I mean, it was.
It was redesigned.
Redone in two thousand six.
Right.
Um, yeah. So I don't see the state doing anything anytime soon.
And so along with that, we also categorize the recommendations into short-term, medium-term, and long-term, so. You know, as you're having to work with the D O T, some of the projects might be more medium or long-term.
So Alyssa.
Yeah.
You talked about the Fox Run subdivision.
Yep.
Has there been any discussion with the owner of that area, and it's developing wonderfully, about maybe being a part?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. We haven't had any discussions with them yet, but that's definitely something that could happen in the future. I think I heard that maybe they're adding another. Uh, building up there here soon, so um, but that could be a discussion later on. Yeah, Ken.
Yes, I'd like to talk about the. The uh addition of the property, the lane of traffic between Water Street and Staley. And we, we live, uh, we have property that is at the end of Court Street. And um, we have property that is also at the the flowage. Gets flowage from Harrison Park. So I wanna point out what I believe is a dangerous situation that is occurring. At the present time, you talk about uh the danger over at eighty. Uh, what to do there as far as going over or going underneath. So I wanna go through this. I have a number of comments here if you uh. Don't understand what I'm saying, I'll say it again. Okay, I'll start out by saying that um. Prior to my work in the Common Council, which didn't, did not start until the early eighties. Uh, Harrison Park was being filled with debris during the construction of Harrison Park. Uh, we moved to next, we moved next to Harrison Park in nineteen sixty-nine. And so at that time, Harrison Park was a, a field, a deep field. That was occupied by one major tree, northern trees. And uh, there was one building there, and that was it as far as Harrison Park in those early years. So Harrison Park was 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 being filled during that time, and it was runoff from Harrison Park. Uh, sediment was going over our property, which we did not know, own yet. Excuse me, we owned, we started owning ownership of that property in nineteen ninety-six. So um, sediment was washing out of the park toward business one fifty-one. Before nineteen eighty-four, I contacted the the Department of Natural Resources. They told me that the city was responsible for controlling the sediment, which was coming from Harrison Park. I contacted the Director of Public Works, that was not Howard, that was back early in the eighties. I contacted the Director of Public Works here in Platteville. And to what I saw, there was nothing, nothing done about controlling of the sediment. Going into the Roundtree branch and also going into our property. At the present time, going underneath business one fifty-one is a thirty-one inch metal pipe. And is not covered. In my opinion, that pipe should be covered. As has been done for a number of the other pipes that go towards Staley Avenue. So there should be a grill, whatever you wanna call it, put over the top of that thirty-one inch area.
Can I interrupt? Is this about the pedestrian and bike plan?
Yes, it is.
Are you, what page are you on in this plan? Because I don't remember reading about Harrison Park in this plan.
No, it's, it's a plan and in Harrison Park, and involves a plan that. Involve the safety of people walking and using business one fifty-one. I think that's important.
So you're, you're now talking about the safety a lot.
I'm not talking about a particular page, I just written this up. So I, I believe that uh there needs to be a cover to this thirty-one inch pipe. And um, I also found that along that area. That drainage from Harrison Park, that uh, there's been a lot of rubbish, debris. Brought into that area, dropped there by people that own that area, for example. And part of the uh improvement of that area as far as the, the uh. The entering of the stream from Harrison Park. There was a thirty-six inch uh wheel there that comes, comes from a milk cart. Milk carts, it could have been a milk cart, or it could have been a, a two-wheel buggy, but I think it was a milk cart, so I. That was taken out when the person uh came along and straightened out that area so that I could mow that area. So um. Also wanna point out that young people play in the water during storms, in other words, during storms. That involve water coming from Harrison Park. I've seen uh evidence of people using shovels. Playing in the upper area, and also people that are playing in the, in the lower areas. So my recommendation is that something needs to be done to cover this particular area, because it's dangerous. So. Any questions about my comment?
No questions for me. I will say, um, we, we do have some recommendations in the plan. We noticed that Harrison Park is kind of a gap area for sidewalks. So we did include sidewalks along Harrison Park. Um, unfortunately, we don't have any certified engineers on staff. So we're not really responsible for looking at the runoff along Harrison Park, so that just wasn't part of the scope of this plan. Um, but, yeah, that's what I have.
But uh, Harrison Park is contributing sediment. That's contributing enough drainage, so it is a hazard.
Yeah.
That's my comment.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, we don't have engineers on staff, so that's not something that's within our scope.
Well, uh, that, that new pa- new uh lane along the bluff there is used by people. They walk along that particular lane, they go against traffic, they walk with the traffic. So to me, it's a dangerous spot. Sometimes they ride their bicycles along there.
Yeah, definitely, and hopefully the recommendation to add some sidewalks along there will help with. Um, the pedestrian situation with them, you know, walking against the traffic and stuff, so.
Okay.
The other, the other question I have was, what about on Ridge Avenue? What is uh the width of the bike lane on Ridge? I think there was comments about it being too narrow. A bike lane has to be at least four feet from the curb, I believe. And I don't think that.
I don't remember.
Four feet.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head. It's definitely in the plan. Um. One thing we noticed about Ridge Avenue is that um with the curb and gutter. Um, part of the, the length of, or the width of that bike lane includes the gutter. And so we kind of checked up on those standards to see how wide the bike lane should be. So it seems like the bike lane on Ridge is a bit narrow. Um, and there were a lot of comments about that in our focus groups, so that could be an area to. Improve in the future if that street is reworked.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else with questions? Okay, then we'll move this to action the next time. Um, and thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said, let me know if you have any questions. Happy to answer those.
And if you need a copy of the plan, there are copies available if you want a hard copy. Okay, next.
My, my question on this is that, will there be any changes to the plan from the comments we made this evening?
Alyssa, if you're gonna speak, you have to go back to the microphone, because it has to be recorded.
There's uh no comments that I heard tonight that would warrant um any edits at this point, but of course, if there's questions later on.
As I've said, the reason I brought it up is safety. Because I read in Madison that somebody got into a tube, and I believe it, the person was killed. So I don't think we should be operating under those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have contract twelve twenty-four alley paving.
Yes, thank you. Um. We uh, we intended to do, to do two small projects within the budget. It was rejected in March because it was over budget. Uh, we reduced the scope and rebid the current scope. Uh, includes paving the alley from Alden to Roundtree Avenue. Uh, and the other part is paving an alley between East Mineral and East Furnace Street. East of Water Street. Uh, this provides access to driveways and garages. And uh, our, our people uh end up uh plowing it. And so we're looking to pave that. Uh, we use street division crews to help with shaping, grading. Um, we had one bid for the project, a little over twenty-four thousand dollars. The budget is thirty thousand. Um, so we're recommending awarding to Owens Excavating for that bid price.
Okay, questions on alley paving? Otherwise, we would move that to action at the next meeting. Okay, contract eighteen dash twenty-four North Court Street reconduct- reconstruction.
Yes, um, this is for uh water sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street reconstruction. Of North Court Street from Adams to Lewis Street. Uh, uh, this was approved. To go out for bids when Soden and Grace came in under budget. It will help support the new fire facility. Uh, we have an alternate bid to replace sanitary sewer uh on Court Street south of Adams. It's in very poor condition. That was approved by the Water and Sewer Commission on May eighth. We had six bidders, and uh, uh, we are under budget on this uh. With the uh project, including the alternate bid. To G Pro Excavating at the bid price of just under three hundred forty-six thousand dollars. Dan is here in case you have any specific questions on, on this also.
Uh, do I recall that G Pro did the work on uh Hickory Street?
Yes, they did uh Hickory and Gridley. Uh, they did uh the McGregor Plaza Sewer Project.
And did they finish up the West Main Street?
No, they didn't, they didn't do that one. That wasn't their project. They also did the work on the university, the, the sewer project there. So they've been a very good contractor for us.
Okay, questions on this? Okay, no questions on uh North Court Street reconstruction, we'll. Move on to award contract fourteen dash twenty-four Engineering Design Services for um. It's a four-year contract, twenty, or is it four or five years, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine?
Technically, five years.
Technically, five years.
Um, periodically, we solicit proposals for engineering, design, and services. Uh, we uh sent out the request in February. Now, we've received the proposals towards the end of April. Uh, technically, what this would be is for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven with option years. For twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Uh, we had three proposers and two other firms that expressed interest. But declined to submit at this time. Uh, the three proposers were Hutchison Engineering. Uh, they, they are pretty much based out of Illinois, but they recently established. An office in Beloit, and their uh project manager is a U W Platteville graduate. Um, I'm wary to, to work with them because of their lack of experience. With Platteville and with Wisconsin in general. Um, you know, we're all supposed to be fifty happy, wonderful states, but each state does things just a little bit different. And, and I just love to, you know, so I'm, I'm not recommending them. Verbicker is an ex- is an exceptional firm to work with. They have many U W P graduates. They have an extensive planning session that has assisted with TIF creation for Platteville in the past. Uh, we've worked with them uh during coordination on a U W P project. Um, and they worked with us to coordinate relocating a sanitary sewer line. They are a good firm to work with. Um, Delta Three, they've been doing this for a long time now. That we have a very close relationship between uh their staff and city staff. And they're also in the community supporting the other uh areas of the community with their expertise. I am very comfortable with either Verbicker or Delta Three to perform quality work. Um, but if you also look at the, the cost factors. I think that uh, you know, because of the workmanship, the experience. And the significant difference in cost that we ought to award to Delta Three Engineering.
Questions?
I have one question, and uh, this is uh, it says staff recommends, so. How large was your group of staff members as far as the consideration of these? Different firms. In other words, I'm talking about uh, how many people were involved? Now, for me, the word staff is sometimes easier just to mean one person. How many persons were involved in selection among these three different firms?
Myself and Howard, uh, were the two main people that reviewed the contracts and met and talked with folks.
The two people?
Correct.
Two people.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move this on for action at our next meeting. Uh, resolution twenty-four XX City of Platteville adjusted urban area boundary.
Yes, thank you. Um, periodically, uh, the Federal Highway Administration and State DOT adjusts our urban area boundary, uh, after every census. I know it seems like a long time since the census, but this is when they got around to it. Uh, this basically defines the area where the city has the inputs into which streets are eligible for federal funding until the next revision. Areas outside are managed by the township and the county. Uh, what we have is we have, uh, our first map um, with the, with the black lines. You know, the more extensive area was what we had in twenty-ten. And basically the DOT is recommending a lot of those be reduced because we haven't had a whole lot of growth in a lot of those areas. Um, and since this works every ten years, uh, they're recommending that we do this based on, on a, a smaller area, uh, staff. And that's multiple people, me and Joe primarily and Clint a little bit, work with the DOT staff. And we are recommending the boundary in yellow on the, on the back map. Uh, that would go with the resolution to show our new boundaries for, um, for the next ten years. What it, like I said, what it means is if anybody's requesting, uh, federal or state, uh, DOT funding for, for street projects in this boundary, they have to coordinate with us. Anything outside, uh, would be outside that area. Uh, we, we were going to have. Okay, our, our contact person from DOT, um, had a personal commitment come up. He was going to try to zoom in, but it looks like he wasn't able to, to do that.
So, so Howard, help me understand the advantage of reducing. I mean, I don't understand what, I mean, it seems, wh- what would be the advantage of adjusting the boundaries to be smaller? I mean, I don't see that that's an advantage for the city. It doesn't cost us anything to have them far out or close in. It could cost us something if somebody, if we reduced them and there was some kind of development we didn't support. And, and couldn't be consulted. So it, it seems to me that at this point, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at it upside down, but it seems to me reducing it is not necessarily in our best interest.
The issue is that Federal Highway Administration and State DOT believes that, that these boundaries are overextended and that they need to be reduced to a reasonable growth area. And so our thought was let's compromise and, and allow them some areas and, and work. And, uh.
So the first map that you have that has the bright green and the purple, is that the current map?
The, the current map includes all of the light shaded area within the black lines. The, the purple was their originally proposed line that they were going to reduce everything, uh, based on the growth patterns over the last ten years. They were, they were going to cut a whole bunch of areas out. And in talking with them, we convinced them to extend at least some of that area and put some of that back into the planning area, uh, particularly the area south of Noelwood. And then there's a, an area on the west side of the city, um, that we, that we, uh, argued should remain in the, in the new area. Sorry.
I guess I'm just having trouble reading the maps.
I'm, I'm saying things.
It's hard for me to understand which is recommended, which was negotiated back in. I, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Howard, if I'm correct, the, like, the, the black outline, the very outlined in the gray, that's our current adjusted urban area boundary. DOT said, no, 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 that's too big. So they proposed the green and wanted to shrink it all the way down to the green. And we clawed back to the purple. Is that, I'm sorry, even pass that to the, to the, uh, to the red.
Yellow.
I'm sorry.
On the second map.
The yellow on the second map. And we negotiated back to the purple. Is that?
So the, the green was what they wanted?
The green is the urban area based on the census.
There we go.
That's, that's not part of it.
So the green.
What he's saying is correct that in twenty-ten, based on the twenty-ten census, the current urban area boundary is bounded by the, the black line with all of that light colored shading. They are proposing that they shrink it down to the purple line. Um, and so we ended up negotiating it back in a couple of areas so that on the second map that has the yellow line, that it includes those areas.
Got you. Thank you.
Howard, would it be possible to have a, another map that moves that yellow line to the one that has the purple and black?
Yeah, that would make, then you could see what was negotiated back.
Is that, is that tough to do or?
Um, I'll, I'll work with them on that, but, uh, for purposes of the, of the resolution, the, a clean map has to go with the resolution as an attachment to the resolution. And so the, 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 if the yellow one is the one that's approved, then it has to be a clean one.
Right.
In there. But what I can do is I can ask them to create a, put a, put the yellow line in that first map that has the purple and the green and all that stuff. I, I will ask them to do that.
More sense because it's really hard to.
Yeah.
Question for you. Do, do they have the ability to disregard what we ask and set it where they want to? Or do we have any kind of, um, decision-making ability here to inform them of where we want it to be, I guess?
They, they coordinate with us, but really it's their decision. Um, you know, we try to negotiate the best we can with them. Uh, like I said, they wanted to shrink it down based on, on the fact that we haven't had a lot of growth, especially on the south side of the city in the last ten years or so. And so we're, we were doing what we felt was an appropriate pushback to allow for the extra growth area. Um, like I said, they, they could probably, they could do this without us, but. Um, yeah.
You may have said this, but did they accept what you pushed back for the yellow area already? Did they say that's fine?
Yes, they, they, they worked with us and agreed with, with our rationale and, and, and they accept the yellow area.
Okay.
Not the purple or the black?
The purple and the black. Okay, okay. I'm right here with you. Okay.
All right. Now that we've got the colors all straightened up, I believe that's the last information and discussion item on our agenda tonight. Uh, we do have a closed session tonight per, uh, Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eight-five parent one parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is about possible land acquisition. Uh, I would take a motion to go to closed session. Uh, we would, uh, Clint, our, um, idea is that we would not return to open session with a decision.
Any action we would be taking tonight would be in closed session and I would recommend adjourning from closed session.
So we will, uh, adjourn from closed session. So, um, okay.
Second it.
A motion by Bob, second by Lynn to go to closed session. Um, Kalat will vote? No.
Yes.
Parrot?
You said parrot. I don't know why I thought you said Harris. I'm like, oh, Harris. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Top?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Yes. Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.